Keep up with everything. Okay, so some questions here more about general SAT stuff. First one, how strict and competitive are Ivy Leagues from a US perspective? As I'm an international student. And what are your main points of guidance to getting an Ivy League? Getting into an Ivy League purely in an SAT score aspect. So Ivy Leagues are insanely competitive, as I'm sure many of you know. In terms of what you can do to get in for an SAT perspective, unfortunately, I don't have a very cool answer. It's just get a high score. But I will say this to not be glib. The thing with SAT scores, regardless of where you're looking, whether it's top tier Ivy or wherever, they matter, but they don't define you exactly because you've got SAT scores or ACT scores. You've got GPA, you've got extracurriculars, you've got your college admissions essay, all that kind of stuff. That all goes into a package. So if you don't have quite the scores that a typical admid student would have to get into a Cornell or Harvard or whatever, doesn't mean you're doomed because other parts of your application, your grades, your extracurriculars and so on, may help support you, may create a picture that the admissions board, admissions committees are gonna like. Same thing if you have really high scores, if you do awesome on the SAT, you get a 1600. That's no guarantee to get into any of these schools, especially Ivies. They're insanely competitive. They have their really pick of the litter. And even if you've got like the best scores ever, doesn't guarantee anything. So it's kind of good news and bad news thing. The good news is if you don't have great scores, you know, you still have a fighting shot. The one thing I would say is don't just apply to Ivies. Of course, always apply to a mix of schools. You don't want to throw in your lot into one type of school. You want to get a good mix of Ivies and standard schools and reach schools and all that stuff. Let's get, finish these and I'll come to some chat questions. So how weighted is the SAT essay in contributing to the overall score? Is there particular style? So I go through a lot of this detail about the essay in my SAT essay course. It's free on my site, recentprep.com. I recommend you check that out. Just to answer this question briefly, the SAT score for the essay is not folded into the 1600 score. So the SAT is out of 1600 and then the score you get on the essay is from two to eight times three for each of the three categories and they don't mix at all. And in fact, a lot of colleges don't even look at the essay. So I wouldn't worry a ton about it in most cases. So really the focus should be on the multiple choice, but they don't interact at all, the two scores. In terms of particular style, I go into this more in the essay course, but formal. It's supposed to be a formal essay. So the kinds of essays you'd write for your English class would be appropriate. In terms of tackling reading questions, I don't know what you mean by rhetorical. That's more of a grammar, writing, language type thing. For inference type, I will say one thing, I go over this a lot in my videos and courses, but I will say the most important thing I think you should know for inference questions on reading. And that is don't overthink them. A lot of, this is probably one of the most common questions I get for reading. It's like, oh, these inference questions are really annoying. What do I do? Most of the time, they're really just like any other question in the sense that the answer is in the text. Even if it's an inference question, the answer is in the text. You just have to find the portion of the passage that gives you the answer. It gives you the clue. And whenever you have to do an inference, it's not going to be much beyond what's there. So don't overthink them too much would be the most important thing I would say. So another question about essay, everyone loves the essay or maybe loves to hate it. I'm going to find a better way to display questions because this is kind of annoying. Okay, so I recently got back my SAT scores and the analysis part on the essay wasn't so good. Essay was good, but analysis was lacking. So I go over this a lot in the SAT essay course. The analysis, there are, so there are three scores you're going to get for your essay. You've got your reading, your analysis and your writing. And typically, reading and writing are not going to be too bad. So this is from two to eight, two to eight, two to eight. Typically, especially with some training, most students don't have much problems with the reading and the writing. The analysis is always the tricky part and I talk about this a lot in the course. So for more details, check out the free SAT essay course on my site. Yeah, the analysis is the hard part. So there's a few components to this. One is you need to know the basic rhetorical strategies that authors use. And I have a list of this in the course, you can get a whole list of them. So you want to know things like how authors use evidence, statistics, how they use arguments by analogy, how they use arguments by induction or deduction. You want to know use of vivid language, tone, argument, appeal to authority, appeal to emotion, hyperbole, exaggeration, understatement, like irony, sarcasm, all these kinds of strategies. You want to know what these are so that when you're reading the essay, you know, okay, here's an example of this, here's an example of this, here's an example of this. Because you want to be specific. That's the most important thing I can say about analysis. Be specific about the type of strategy that you're talking about. If you're too broad, that's often what people run into. A lot of times students will go, they'll talk about like logos, ethos and pathos, which you know, is alright. But logos literally means logic. So saying that something is logical isn't really very interesting. It's a little too broad. You know, saying something is riven with emotion is interesting, but be more specific. So the main thing with analysis is specificity. Be specific, really drill into it. You don't have to cover everything. Just find the three items that you want to talk about and focus in on those. I'm going to try my best to avoid this. So we've got b squared minus 36 equals a times b. In the equation above, if a is greater than zero and a and b are integers, what is one possible value of a? Okay, so this, okay, this person, okay, they gave you more than one answer. Okay, so the previous question was about patterns. Someone had a question about math patterns. And when we're talking about math patterns, the main thing I would say on this one is to recognize like what family of problems this is from. So when I see this, the first thing that pops into my head is quadratics, of course. We've got b squared minus 36, which actually looks like the difference of two perfect squares. I don't know if that will be relevant, maybe, but it's interesting. And so I know I'm in that family. So when I think about quadratics, I think what do I do with quadratics? Well, I do things like factor them. I solve for solutions. I do the quadratic equation. I do the discriminant. There's all different kinds of things I might do. And what I would do at this point, if I don't know exactly what to do, is just kind of mess around and see what happens. So b squared minus, what I'm going to do is I'm going to move the ab over here just to make it like a quadratic. So the key of this one is to realize, okay, I'm going to need two numbers that are, if I were to factor this, I'm going to need two numbers that are going to multiply out to negative 36. And when that happens, I'm going to be by definition defining what my a value is. For example, one of the solutions, one of the products you can get here would be negative nine and four. So minus nine and positive four. And think about what that means if it multiplies, it multiplies out to negative 36. That means they're going to add up to negative nine plus four. That adds up to negative five, right? That would be the sum and that sum is going to be this a value. Because when you factor these out, this would be b minus nine, b plus four. That multiplies out to negative 36. And then when you add up negative nine b and plus four b, you're going to get negative five b. Now, the trick here is since we already have minus ab, that means a is going to have to be five so that this would actually work out to be negative five. So the point is we're going to get negative five, or we get five as one of our answers. And if you think about all the possibilities for your solutions, you could have nine and negative four, which would also be five. You could have other ones, you could have 12 and three, which would get you nine. You could have 18 and two, which gets you 16, or 36 and one, which gets you 35. The point is you're going to get four different possible answers here, depending on what your product originally was. So what numbers you multiplied to get to negative 36. So that would, that's how you get those four answers. So again, that's the way we think about this. The category is quadratics, just start factoring, see what happens. A lot of times you don't know where you're going to go until you actually get there. So you have to just kind of mess around and see what you get. So in the reading section, there's 13 minutes per passage, right? Five passages, 65 minutes, 65 divided by five gets you 13. So should I skip every question after the 13 minutes? Because I take a lot of time in one passage, more than 13, which affects my time at the end, especially in the last passage. So there's a few things going on here. Let me enumerate them. The first thing would be passage order. I talk about this in my reading course, among other things. And just because the passages are in a certain order in the test, doesn't mean you have to do them in that order. So for example, the history passage, the one from 1800s typically. If that one takes up a lot of your time, if that's going to be one of the ones that typically gets you above that 13 minute limit, doing it first or doing it before you finish everything else is kind of a bad idea. So that might be a passage you leave until the end. So the idea here is you're going to do hard passages last and do the easier ones first. So this depends on you. So the history might be hard for you. For me, fiction passages would be, I guess, my worst one. So I would tend to do that one last. And, and yeah, so you want to do the hard passages last so that if you run into this issue, at least you finished everything else. You don't have to worry about running out of time on easier questions. The other thing, what I would add to this, whoops. The other thing I would add to this as well is don't get hung up on questions. So the problem with what's being suggested here is that once we run out of our 13 minutes, whatever questions we have left, we're going to have to guess on because we didn't have time on and move on to the next passage, just to keep that bracketing. The problem with that is if we got hung up on a really hard question earlier in that set and that forces us to skip easy questions later, that sucks, right? Because now we're spending time on a hard question, we might still get it wrong. And then we have easy questions that we have to skip and guess on and that stinks. So what do we have to do instead? What we do instead is keep moving, don't get hung up. So part of this is knowing which questions for you are harder than others. Part of this is just knowing not to get sucked into one question. Part of this is knowing proper question order so you don't get hung up on questions. But what you should be doing, if you're going to skip questions, is skipping the hard ones, not the easy ones. So you want to constantly be moving around so that you get to those easy questions first and then skip the hard ones. And then if you have time, come back later. More that can be said on this, but I think that's enough for now. How do I mention manage time on the reading section for both tests? So pretty broad question, hard for me to answer that in a concise way. Let me give you again, a general tip for SAT and ACT in general, in terms of time management. And I talk about this a lot in my videos. So some of you out there may have heard me say this before. So when it comes to SAT and ACT reading, but this actually applies really to any section, applies to anything. Applies to ACT science, that applies to the math sections of both tests. Here's the thing, don't get hung up unless you're going for like a 36 or 1600. Don't get hung up on finishing the section. I think this is the big issue that a lot of students have. So let's take ACT reading. Biggest question I get is how do I finish the section? How do I finish the test? I'm running out of time. And that's actually like not really the right question. The right question is how do I get more questions right? That's what matters. Whether you finish the section or not, certainly it correlates to some extent to how many you're getting right. But what matters is getting more right, not finishing the section. Finishing the section is a nice bonus. And certainly if you're going for a perfect score, you're going to need to finish. But if you're going on the ACT, let's say you're targeting a 30 in reading. Finishing the section is not strictly required. Same thing if you're going for a 700 reading, finishing the section is not required. What's required is getting the questions right, you need to get right to get the score you want to get. So in terms of time management, I've got a lot that I can say about this and probably will come up over different questions and certainly it's in my videos elsewhere. The thing to think about is how do I get more questions right? And that changes the game because now instead of how do I finish the test? It's how do I make sure I squeeze every point out of every easy question that I can? And every medium question that I can? How do I triage? How do I segregate my hard questions so that I don't waste time on a hard question when I've got easy and medium questions to go? So think instead, you know, not finishing the section is not the big issue in many cases that people think it is. Getting questions wrong that you should have gotten right is the problem. So that's what I want you to think about in terms of time management. Again, I've got a lot more to say about it, but that's just the most concise answer I can give temporarily. So Pizza Hunter, I love pizza, good name, is, has a question. I have trouble with transition word questions in the writing section. This would also apply, by the way, to the ACT English. So transition word. And transition word questions in the writing section and get them wrong. Any idea how to fix this? So transition word questions. This is those questions where you have to pick from like however, moreover, for example, that kind of thing. And I talk about this in the writing course. I have a video on what are called the four principles, where I talk about the four elements that you need to pay, pay attention to for these kinds of questions and rhetorical skills questions generally. For these questions, what I would point you to is principle number two. Principle number two is you want to make sure your choice produces logical flow. So one of the problems that students often have on these questions is they just focus on the sentence with the however, or the therefore, or the moreover, or whatever in it. You got to focus on the whole. You got to focus on the sentences before and after, because that shows you the flow of ideas through that paragraph. So if you're just focused on a small portion of that paragraph, you're going to be missing that flow. And what you're paying attention to is what makes logical sense to connect one sentence to the next. So for example, a very simple example would be if there's contrast of ideas, you're going to need a contrasting word like however, nevertheless, on the other hand, et cetera. If there is cause and effect. So if one thing is the effect of something else, then you would need something like a thus or a in conclusion, or therefore, something like that. So it's about the flow logically from one part of the paragraph to the next. So I recommend checking out that video in my writing course for free. You can find it on YouTube, just Google or YouTube four principles, reason prep. It should come up and you'll see all about this. So a question about getting the main idea when you're reading. This is also a very common question and getting the main idea supplies to both SAT and ACT reading. First things first, most questions on both tests don't require you to know the main idea. So just like with inference questions, main idea isn't really as important as some might think. Certainly there are questions that are going to be more general, absolutely. And even some specific questions might have some general idea you need to know to answer them. But most questions on both tests are specific and don't require us to know the main idea. So that's the first thing. It's not going to be the be all, end all. However, when we want to find the main idea, and certainly that's something to do, especially to answer certain questions, you know, it depends on the passage we could work through an actual passage and we can see, okay, how does this lead to a main idea? How do we get the main idea out of what we've read? So it really depends on the actual passage. But I would say the one thing, a few things I can mention would be pay attention to really the first two paragraphs especially. At the very least are going to set up the main idea. So sometimes they will, for example, set up what people used to think about a topic so that the new, so that this article will then say something different about it. Or maybe they'll just lay out the argument right away. So those first two paragraphs, maybe even first three, but I think first two is good enough, are really very important. Then topic sentences of the other paragraphs can sometimes help, especially when they reveal kind of transitional language, transition sentence, because they can give you the structure of what the argument might be. And then probably the most important thing for finding the main idea is pay attention to moments of contrast and difference. So what do we mean by that? So when you're reading a passage and the author says something like, previous scientists believed X. That's a really important moment because what the author is probably going to do is contrast his or her argument to that, to what people used to believe or to what other people believe. So you're looking for moments where the author is drawing contrasts between his or her ideas and other people's ideas. Because in that contrast, you're going to see what the author is trying to say. Because arguments, main ideas don't really make sense without knowing what part of the conversation they are in. So like, think of any piece of writing as being part of a conversation, a broader conversation with all other kinds of scientists and writers. And getting the main idea only makes sense when you understand where in the conversation it sits. And you do this by paying attention to contrast and the difference. Where do you see, like we saw before with the transition words and writing questions, where do you see words like however, on the other hand, nevertheless, things like that? Wherever the author mentions other people's ideas. All this stuff can tell you what the ideas are that that author is reacting to and then therefore defines his or her ideas accordingly. So these questions are what I call detailed dual. Because we're taking the detail from one passage, an actual line reference. And then we want to know how the author of the other passage would respond to that. The most important thing to know to help answer these questions is the passage relationship. So you need to know passage one, passage two, passage A, passage B, depending on which test. What is the relationship between the two passages? And there's really three categories. And the most common one is that they're opposite, they disagree. So often on the SAT, you've got a lot of history passages that are like about feminism or something. And you've got one person who has one position and then another person who has an opposite position. Right? So that passage relationship is going to be critical for understanding questions like this. Because the fact that one author disagrees with the other very often is going to color how they're going to respond to the other person's writing. Another relationship you might get would be similar. So they both are writing about the same issue, but they agree more or less. And then if they agree or they're, you know, in the same ballpark, that's going to color how they're going to respond to each other's writing. And then the last one is no relationship. You don't see this too often. Used to see it a lot more, I think, on the old SAT, but not on the new one. This would be if they're talking about a topic which they, they're talking about the same topic, but they don't really agree or disagree. They're just kind of talking about it in a different way. So maybe one passage, for example, would be about the history of comic books. And then another passage would be about the particular author's experience with comic books in the eighties. Right? There's no necessarily link between those two. You're not really going to see that too often on either test. These are the most common and especially opposite disagree. So you want to know, the main thing I would say here, after you've finished both passages, you want to go back and check, do I know what the relationship is between these passages? Because that's the key. Do they agree? Do they disagree? On what do they agree or disagree? Because that's going to help you with a lot of those questions. Okay, again, another question that's a little hard for me to answer and I'll tell you why. What's the best thing to do when there's 21 days left? Very similar to like the last minute question, what's to do at the last minute? I don't really know what the best thing would be for you to do, given what you've studied so far, what your score is right now, what your goals are. So I don't know. The main thing I would say probably, I mean, this probably applies to anyone, is take a real practice test in the practice test conditions. So I really recommend treating this as seriously as you can. That means getting up early in the morning on a weekend and maybe going to a library or going to a quiet place, not in your house, with some pencils, with a stopwatch, with a test you haven't done before, a real test from the SAT or the ACT with a bubble sheet and make that practice test as realistic as you can. Because you want to get into that experience of doing it early in the morning. You're somewhat groggy, right? Teenage brain, eh, it doesn't work well in the morning. So you want to do it then, rather than like, you know, three o'clock on a lazy Saturday. It's just a different experience. So doing it in the morning, like it was a real thing. If you can get someone to proctor you, that would be probably the best thing in the world. But if not, you can proctor yourself and really getting that experience of doing a full test. And then, once you've done that full test and you've checked your answers and you scored it, going over every single question, even once you got right, to really make sure that you fully understand the test. That is the meat of a real good SAT and ACT program, is going through that process of doing tests, doing sections, doing homeworks, packets, whatever it is, and then reviewing those questions and seeing what you need help with. And then you can bring those questions to the live streams or you can contact me and we can do tutoring or whatever. But those practice tests are the key, really doing those full practice tests in real conditions, as simulated as you can, that's going to lead to the best results for you. Because getting from a 30 to a 34 to 36 depends on the section, right? Depends on whether you're talking about English, math, reading, science. So it's hard to give a really blanket answer that would be of any use. So let me talk more specifically about the science. Again, it's hard to know why you're getting a 30 instead of those, whether you're finishing the section in time or if you're running out of time, or if you're finishing it, but you're getting questions wrong. And then it depends on what question types you're getting wrong, which passage types. So it's a bit complicated. I would, I guess I would say this. Most likely in the science section, you're getting certain question types wrong. And I can list them out. Most likely, a number of the ones you're getting wrong include the last question of each passage. The last question of each passage on ACT science is actually typically harder than the rest. And often, if you actually see the ones students at this point get wrong, it's usually the last one of each passage. It's weird, but they're harder, so it makes sense. Other ones you might be getting wrong involve experimental design and reasoning. In other words, why did the scientists design the experiment the way they did? What can you conclude from the data? What hypotheses are supported or not supported? Right? Very different from the more straightforward graph questions where it's just reading data off of a graph. These are more about the scientific method. And I actually made a video, it's part of my science course, but you can find it on YouTube, about the scientific method. So watching that video and really understanding controls and variables and how all that works out, or at least refreshing it if you already know, can help. And then the final thing would be outside knowledge. So there is some very miniscule outside knowledge tested on ACT science. You want to make sure you know all of that. And the best way to learn that is to get a resource that shows you where all the outside knowledge is. So there's probably websites out there, you can find, just Google ACT science outside knowledge. I'm sure you'll find a ton of stuff. Then also in my ACT science course, I have like a packet of the facts and factoids and figures and things based on outside knowledge that you should know. So that would be another resource if that was something you were interested in. So those would be the main three things I would say for now. Again, it's hard to know without getting into more details about your situation. Okay, we've got a question about trig. This is from a test, so I'm going to just draw it out here. And I apologize for my terrible pictures. Okay, in the unit circle with center O. So by the way, when they say unit circle, they mean it's got a radius of one. So I know that's got a radius of one. The length of arc PQ, which I assume is this, PQ, is pi over three. What is the value of the cosine of POQ? Cosine of theta. So we've got a trig here, we've got some arc stuff, all good stuff. So the first thing we need to realize is in a unit circle, the measure of the arc is going to be the same as the measure of the angle. So in this case, it's just pi over three would be the radian measure of the angle in a unit circle. So now I need to know my trigonometry. Don't know if this would be in a calculator section or not. If it's calculator, it's easy. You just plug in cosine of pi over three into your calculator. But here's an example of what I was talking about before in terms of shortcuts, things to know. You should be able to know cosine of pi over three is a half. Or alternatively, that this can be translated into cosine of 60 and that that's a half. You should know that instantly. And so one of the ways that you can learn all this is you can learn how to copy this diagram. So when I was in school, when I was in high school, which by the way, was a really long time ago. I may not look at, but I'm actually really old. I went to school, I graduated in 2002 from high school. It was 15 years ago. But anyway, when I was in school, when I was in calculus or precalculus, what I would do to learn this is I would, every day before math, I would copy down from memory this, this diagram that I'm going to show you. And then over time, I learned it so that to this day, I know all these trig functions. And for SAT where in some part of the test, you don't have a calculator, this is really useful to be able to know. So it's the sine, cosine and tangent of 30, 45 and 60. So we can fill this in. We've got a half, radical two over two, radical three over two, one half, radical two over two, radical three over two, radical three over three, one and radical three. So that is boom, right there. Sometimes in school, you're, you're told to learn the unit circle. I'm not a big fan of that. I think it's too much memorization. There's some nice patterns and things to remember in this that can really help you. So I like this rather than unit circle, but that's a conversation for another time because that's kind of complicated. Is it okay to start from back to front on SAT math section? Very good question. Thank you for asking it. And it's okay that you're late. There's no, there's no, you know, you're not going to get in trouble from the teacher. And by the way, any of you can just pop in and out. This is totally informal. Don't feel like any of you have to stay. the question was, is it okay to start from back to front? So the answer is no. And I'm going to very specific reason why it's not okay to do that. So let's, let's say we're talking about section four. And I'm just going to do something very rough. Okay. So I've So I've grouped these questions in order, in chunks, by approximate difficulty. So again, this is very approximate. Don't be wedded to this. But 1 to 12, there's an order of difficulty in math. So the first 12-ish questions, we might consider to be like an easy. And then the middle set, we might consider to be like medium. And on the score reports for the PSAT, this is like 1 bar, 2 bars, or 3 bars of difficulty, basically. For these, we would call these hard. And then when you get to the grid ins, which is the next set, the difficulty resets. So this would be easy. This would be medium. And again, this is approximate, this is not exact. Every test is different, but it's just for illustration purposes, and this would be hard. So the question was, "Is it okay to do it from back to front? To start from these and work your way backwards?" And the thinking here, I'm guessing, and a lot of times is what people think, is since these questions are so hard, and they take more time, I need to get those done first before I worry about the easier ones, because I need the time to do those hard ones. And that actually has it backwards, because if you spend way too much time on the hard questions, and maybe even still get them wrong, and then you have to rush, or skip, or guess easy questions, that's like the worst thing you can do. Because now you're spending way too much time on hards, you're making avoidable mistakes on easy questions, not good. So instead, do it the traditional way. And again, depending on your scoring range, you might actually consider skipping these hard chunks, getting all the easy and medium stuff done first, and then going back to the hards. Again, it depends on your scoring range, your goals, things like that. But you absolutely wanna start, and this is a general rule of thumb for the SAT and the ACT, no matter the section. And that is, you do easy stuff first, and then you do hard stuff last. Because if I'm gonna have to guess or skip questions, I would rather guess on hard questions than on easy ones. Obviously, right? Why would I wanna guess on a question that I can do if I just had 15 seconds or 20 seconds? It's a disaster to do that, right? Rather than, okay, there's a really hard question. If I do it, maybe it'll take me 4 minutes to solve it, and maybe I'll still get it wrong. Well, in that case, why don't you just do everything, all the easy stuff first, and then guess on the hard one? So definitely prioritize easy stuff first, bank all those easy points, bank all those medium points, and then worry about the hard ones. So I do recommend doing it in the traditional path. "What do you suggest would be the best way to study?" Best way to study? Do practice sections timed, do practice tests timed, and then review your work. And that's really the core of any study program, whether you're using, whether you're doing a tutor, whether you're doing classes, whether you're doing self-prep, whether you're doing video courses, whether you're working out of a book. No matter how you're learning for the SAT or ACT, practice sections, practice tests timed, and then review, review, review. Review every single question, be thorough, so that you know, what am I weak at? What am I strong at? What do I need to review? And then you can bring questions to things like this, to, if you have a tutor, or whatever, if you're working with me, whatever it might be. Bring those questions to your teacher, and you can work on those more. "Can you go over the ACT writing and how it is scored?" So I'll do this briefly. So the ACT writing test is basically the essay. And there are four scores you get. I'll just type these out. So on the ACT English, or the ACT writing test, there are four categories you are graded on. You're graded on ideas and analysis, which is basically your thesis, and how well you analyze whatever it is you're reading. Development support is how well you elaborate and provide examples and evidence for whatever you're saying. Organization, probably self-explanatory, it's how the essay's organized. And then language use is the quality of the writing, sentence structure, vocabulary, grammar, spelling, things like that. They're all graded, so you have a grader that will grade you from 1 to 6 in each category. And then since you've got two graders, the final report will be from 2 to 12 in each of these categories. And then whatever that is, is averaged to give a final overall score of 2 to 12. So on your report, it'll say like 9. And that is a average of the scores of the other four sections. This score is not, just like on the SAT essay, not incorporated at all into your composite. So that composite, 1 to 36 for your multiple choice, is totally separate from the essay. They've got some things where they've got like other scores that combine it, but no one pays attention to that. Just the composite score and the essay, they're basically treated separately. So yeah, that's how it's graded. "Lucky Luke, I watched all the videos in Reason Prep. From there, just take as many practice tests as possible, correct?" Pretty much, right? The one thing I would say with any kind of prep process, don't overthink it. They're not, like, there's no, you know, a lot of, I try not to do this, and I hope I don't, but like, there's no magic bullet. There's not something that you're all missing, that only if you knew, you'd suddenly get a 36 or 1600. It's not really like that. You know, some companies and tutors and stuff might make it seem that way, but it's just not true. There's no magic bullet. Certainly, there's resources that can help, and there's courses, and there's videos, and there's books, and they can all help. But in the end, it just comes down to do practice sections and tests, review your answers, figure out what you're weak in, review those concepts, learn strategies to get better at that. That's it. I mean, it's more complicated than that, but that's it. There's no real, like, it's not like if I, I'm not holding anything back from you, where it's like, if you pay me money, I will tell you the one thing you need to know that will get you a 36 or 1600. No such thing exists. There are strategies and things that help, but in the end, it's, yeah, just doing the grunt work of practice tests, practice sections timed, review, 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 read, 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 review some more. No real secret sauce. "I can never finish the reading passage, help, how do I read faster?" So I talked about this a little bit earlier in the livestream, so when the video is up, check that out later. I will say, in terms of the reading faster aspect, I wouldn't think of it as reading faster. It's not really about reading faster, it's about reading more efficiently, which is different. So it's about reading what you need to read in, at the level you need to read it. So are we talking ACT, or? Let's see.